I call this meeting to order. This is the Board of Supervisors for Newbury Township Reorganization Meeting, January 2nd. I'm James Sanders. I'm the Solicitor. I'm the interim Chair until we go through an election for the official Chair tonight. So if we could please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do you, Mr. Manager, would you like me to do a roll call here?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Harkin.
Present.
Aaron, you haven't taken the oath of office yet, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so present. Ms. Schellenhammer, you're on the line.
Present.
Okay. And Mr. Wintermeyer.
Present.
Okay. All five present and accounted for. Tonight, we're going to take nominations for Chair of the Board. I'd now like to open it up for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Rob Harkins for Chairman.
I'd nominate Rob Harkins for Chairman.
Second.
Any other nominations? Okay, nominations closed. Any discussion at all? I don't think so. Okay, if we can go to a vote, please. We'll do a roll call vote. Start with you, Mr. Wintermeyer.
Aye.
Ms. Schellenhammer.
Yes.
Aaron?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries, five oh. I relinquish my duties.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. Next item of business is nomination of Vice Chair. Looking for nomination for Vice Chair. I'll nominate Diane Schellenhammer. I'll second it.
Any discussion on that? Let's do a roll call vote again, I guess. Have a roll call vote. Claire?
Aye.
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 Our motion carries.
Aye.
You've got to wait for Diane to speak up.
Well, I didn't even raise it. Okay. My motion carries five zero. Next item of business, public comment. Do we have a?
There's no, there's no one on, there's no one on it. Okay.
Next item of business, I'm looking for a motion to appoint the following positions, A through K, and I'll run through them, but we're going to appoint them all in one shot. Manager, Secretary Assistant Treasurer, Tony Miller. Zoning Officer Building Code Official, Jeremy Yutzi. Alternate zoning officer Building Code Official, Donna Donald. Comptroller Treasurer Assistant Secretary, Jane Deemer. Sewage Enforcement Officer, Brett Zider. Alternate Sewage Enforcement Officer, Gary Morrow. Solicitor, James Sanders from NPL. Labor Attorney, Corey Iannonez from Pillar and Ot. Engineer, Bill Rudy from Penney Associates. Police Chief, Stephen Lutz. Third Party Inspection Service, Commonwealth Code and Approved Code.
I'll make a motion. We approve all those appointments.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, sing if I was saying?
Commonwealth Code, is that the, which one is that? Is that the one with Pete in it?
Yes.
Any more discussion on that? All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to authorize supervisors to service township employees.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion to set the treasury bond at one million for the treasurer and manager.
I make the motion to set the bond for one million dollars.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Too slow, Diane. Aaron beat you out.
That's okay.
All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion to authorize Township Manager to appoint Township Staff to service Township Employee with another department.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion to appoint an open records officer. Township will be Tony Miller. The alternate will be Wendy Edder. Police Department will be Stephen Lutz. Alternate will be Braxton Diddy.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to appoint York County Planning Commission Local Advisory Committee. Tony Miller.
I make the motion to appoint Tony Miller for committee.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion to appoint Newbury Township Planning Commission Members. Dave Parsons for a four-year term.
I'll nominate Dave Parsons for a four-year term for commission.
I'll second that. All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion to appoint Newbury Township Police Commissioner. In the past, we've had the chief report to all the board, and I'm assuming we're all okay with that staying the same?
I was going to say, I'll make a motion that everybody, all supervisors could meet with the police chief.
Yes, I agree.
Does that have a second?
Does that have a second, Diane?
Yes, I'm sorry. It's a second.
Okay. All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion to appoint Newbury Township Vacancy Board Chairman. For, this will be Dave Parsons.
I nominate Dave Parsons for vacancy chairman.
I'll second it. All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion to appoint Newbury Township Representative to Lu, yeah, to Lewisberry Sewer Authority. Paul Fisher for a five-year term.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
You're stuck again, Paul.
Looking for a motion to authorize PSTATs convention attendance. April 14th through the 17th, 2024, in Hershey, and appoint voting delegate, Tony Miller.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item of business is resolutions. I'm looking for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-01, Order to Conduct Meetings.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
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 Did we change something, Mr. Rob?
What's that?
Did we get an email or change something on this? Or same, same old, same old? Okay.
Uh, we get to, we didn't change officially change the meeting agenda, like the way the meetings are conducted yet, did we?
Not yet.
No, not yet. Okay.
Well, we have that for January's meeting.
Whenever you're ready to update the policy.
Sooner the better.
So, I lost my place. Did we have a first and second?
We had all of it.
Yes.
We had all of it. We're moving on to the next part. Number two.
Looking for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-02, Establishing the Fee Schedule for Newbury Township.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-3, Establishing Employee Contributions to the Newbury Township Police Pension Plan for Year 2023. Is that correct, the year, correct?
That should be.
2024.
2024.
All right. Plan for Year 2024.
Same on the next one.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
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 The resolution, the resolution date is correct.
Okay. Motion carries. Looking for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-4, Establishing Employee Contributions to the Newbury Township Non-Uniform Pension Plan for Year 2024.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Good.
Was it clear?
All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion to approve Resolution 2024-5, Designating MNT, Members First, Traditions, and Pligot as the Banks for the Depositing of Township Funds.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion to approve Resolution 2024-6, Setting 2024 Wages.
That date needs to be changed as well.
It shouldn't. It says 2024.
It says 2024. As long as the resolution's right, I'll make that motion.
Correct, okay.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion to approve Resolution 2024-7, Establishing the IRS Rate of Mileage Reimbursement for the Use of Personal Vehicles on Township Business at 67 cents per mile.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion to approve Resolution 2024-8, Appointing a Member of the Zoning Hearing Board. Appointing a Member of the Zoning Hearing Board, Paul Fisher.
I'll make a motion. We nominate Paul Fisher for the zoning board.
Just let me reread that. Approve of Resolution 2024-8, Appointing a Member of the Zoning Hearing Board, Paul Fisher. Okay.
I made a motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to other business. First item of business, I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2024 Agreement for Goldsboro Police Services.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Any question? Steve, we get the contract back?
So this is Goldsboro. We're voting on.
Okay, gotcha. Chief, can you? Yeah.
I do. Police Service Agreement, Dave. The Police Services Agreement that we have with Goldsboro and York Haven. I have it on my iPad.
Tony can speak to it. Basically, it's an agreement that the township has with each individual borough. It spells out the services that we provide them and the amount of money that they will be charged per month and per year. It outlines if certain things happen within the borough and they exceed so many calls, they could be charged, I believe, up to $95 an hour, not to exceed $5,000 in a given year. In the case that we give them 24/7 coverage from January 1st to December 31st. It also says that if they use the Animal Control Services contract, that they will be billed and the township will not pay for that. I believe that's all the high points that I actually hit.
It's a 4% increase from last year.
Goldsboro did sign theirs and get it back. York Haven approved it at their meeting. However, they can't find someone to sign it in the past week and a half. That's why you don't have York Havens right now, but they did approve it at their meeting.
Okay, so.
Thank you, sir.
Motion and vote on the Goldsboro.
Motion, we got a motion and we have a second, Phil.
Okay, so, all those in favor of approving the 2024 Agreement for Goldsboro Police Services, sing if I was saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. So can we vote on York Haven or not?
Table it.
Okay, so table the agreement for York Haven Police Services. Do we need an executive session?
I don't need one.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
But before we do that, do we need, did we need to discuss the fee schedules one night for the permits or not?
I can't hear you, sir.
The, we were changing the fee schedules and stuff for permits. Is that something we do now or not?
I can tell you what it is. It's already been passed. Let's see. Which one was it?
The permit is 35 across the board. We can everything for $12.
Yeah, I'll tell them what it is here. Hang on. I got it. Okay, so the fees, the fee schedules that we have, the, all the permits were basically all over the place. And the, so the building permit application fee was 25 bucks. We raised it to 35. The permit renewal fee was 25, raised to 35. The electrical plumbing permit, 35, was 35. The zoning permit was, hang on, I actually have that here. I thought somebody was going to ask. I want to say the wrong thing. Zoning was 35. Driveway permits fee was 25, raised to 35. Erosion sediment fee was 30, raised to 35. So, I don't know over the years how they got all over the place like that, but every one of these permits consistently take the same amount of, if not more, involvement by township staff. And the $35 really just not even covered the cost of what it takes to process these. So, when we wanted to, the thought process was to get it at least across the board at 35. And the fee schedule, if anybody looks back the best couple of years online, the state permit fee was listed as $4, but it's always been 450. So, we made that correction on the fee schedule, but it's always been 450. And the only other thing we changed was ballfield rental fee per organization per season was 250. We raised it to 300. We've had tremendous amount of organization involvement and just about. involvement and just about, well, not just about, seven days a week, both, all the fields. And that's increased the amount of maintenance that it takes to take care of them. And we also, with Dolan Park, now that we made the fields unice, we need a second porta potty instead of just the one that we had down by the playground. So, those costs are kind of going up, and so we added $50 on that fee. So, that's it.
All right. I'll second Dave's motion to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned. You good, Diane? Hello?